Good evening. This is the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 13, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. We're at the Johns-on Center, Community Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield. Everyone in attendance will be required to wear a mask and maintain social distancing. Let's move right into the agenda. And Secretary Johnson Musad, would you do a roll call, please?
Member Karen. Vice Chair Ekstrom, Member Hollins.
Here.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I am here. Chair Poiroti.
Here.
Member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Weidergardner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
That's working.
And I do see Member Ekstrom walking in now. So we are called to order at 6:01 p.m. And we are going to move right into a report from our business manager. Welcome, Mr. Paquette. Good to have you with us. We've got, I think, the FY '22 budget update on the agenda for you.
That is correct. You have in your packet the versions of the budget report from UNIS, the Excel version, and the revolving account status. Just as, you know, no cause for alarm when you look at the report from UNIS regarding the negative $400,000. If you look at the revolving accounts, nothing has been charged, for example, yet to Circuit Breaker and School Choice. Those are going to be the things that's the next step in our process, which we've already started going through with special education and also as far as personnel realignment with all the changes that have occurred. So we have yet to determine what's going to be charged to School Choice. So just rest assured, honestly, as all things stand right now, we are in good financial position going forward. But with that said, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the committee? You just answered it. Member Hollins, go ahead.
I had a question about the ESER funding, the three portions, what the amounts were, what the balances are that are left. I understand it's a fair amount of money and if there's some plan that can be shared on how it's going to be used. And the reason I'm asking is I noticed in this month's warrant, there was maybe $35,000 for math texts. And I was, when I saw that, I thought, hmm, that's interesting. I wonder math materials, if that's eligible for ESER funding? And it's just something I was thinking about. And I had another question about the lease. The van lease was in this month's warrant, I think, for $64,000. And it was charged to the general fund. And I was wondering, since the special transportation revolving fund in the report has a balance of $93,000, if there's an intention to post the lease for the special advance to the revolving account? Thank you.
So I can respond to the use of the ESER funds. I'm happy to do a summary for the committee for the next meeting and outline what the grants have been written for. They are not all approved yet at this point, but we can do the summary. And math materials are definitely an allowable expense because academic learning loss is one of the areas that we're able to use for the grant. And improving our core curriculum is certainly one step in addressing learning loss.
And regarding the lease of the vans, we admittedly made the choice to charge it to the local, but there's nothing saying that we potentially wouldn't reclass it to the revolving account. The issue, I say lowercase i, issue is that with, say, the past 18-plus months of lack of history regarding what were revenue we would be generating with the vans, I didn't want to necessarily charge it initially to the revolving account and totally exhaust or, you know, three-quarters away exhaust those revolving account funds when there potentially might be another need. But there's nothing saying that as the year progresses, if we are generating that revenue, that we would ultimately move that expense to the revolving account, absolutely.
Secretary Johnson Musad, go ahead.
Just, I think the ESER funds are funds that we get to help address some of the difficulties due to COVID. Is that right?
Yes. Well, not just learning loss, there's a variety of categories, but that's a primary, yes.
Okay. So it's like a special one-time fund or something that's coming through from federal funding due to something they passed in Congress? Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions about the budget? Okay, hearing none, we'll go into the strategic planning discussion, which I think is that Andy and Christine.
So we shared with the superintendent our process regarding strategic planning. It's a sample of what we've done for other organizations. We, you know, just copied and pasted the scope of work so that you had an idea as to what it is that we do. One of the things, again, as far as I say the TMS way, TMS concept regarding, I'd say everything we do, which is it's not cookie cutter. If you look and see through there, we do have sort of a, I'll say it's a cookie cutter, non cookie cutter approach to how we do it, but it's very coordinated. The way I describe it is it's coordinated, targeted, routine updates as to the process and check-ins with stakeholders committee so that it is ongoing, not us driving the process. It's really, truly, you know, the purest form, I'd like to think, of facilitation in the strategic planning. We provided a couple of samples of what we've done in the past as to how it is that it would work and what some, like, end results would look like. We, like I said, we went through pretty detail as to what it is, the detailed scope of our work, as well as the, sort of, the action steps and what our role would be in a process such as this. So again, just shared for information and regarding any discussions as to what it is that potentially would come from something like this.
I have worked with TMS in terms of doing strategic planning. The process was probably about 85% finished when I transitioned out of my previous district. And I felt, from the superintendent's perspective, that the plan that was evolving was very actionable and action-oriented because what we want out of this is tangible results for the district. I think probably everybody in their past has seen the very pretty strategic plan or mission statement framed on the wall, but when you really dig into it, you don't really know what to do to make that happen. So one of the most important elements out of the strategic plan process that I was engaged with is that it was very task-oriented in that we had steps to get to the goals and there were markers of progress so that we could speak to. We've gotten this far, we've gotten this far. And there's also an element where you speak to the resources, that if you're committing to a goal in the strategic plan, you have to commit to the resources needed to make that happen. So all of those pieces were laid out. I mean, obviously, there's always the potential for a left turn in the world in a three-year plan, but really, it does, I believe it would set the district up on a good path to actually attain the goals that would be set.
And just to speak regarding the resource side of the approach, there's a concept in industry that is called value chain analysis. We are using that, we've been using that with work we've been doing with Johns Hopkins, where we apply that approach, where it is that you, take us back, we have to report expenses to align with the Department of Education's requirements, but what really speaks, I say, truth to power is how it is that you can actually align your spending to what it is that your values are. And values are normally located in a strategic plan-type, you know, concept. So, you know, the goal would be, you could almost theoretically think about it as you've got your budget for reporting requirements and what is it worth to do operationally? And then we have a budget that is aligned with our values and be able to marry the two and see where it is that there's linkage. But at the same time, it really does say that the real, the value to what it is a district or an organization is about is in the value side of the ledger, if you will.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, and then the mayor.
So I have a question more of the practical than theoretical about this. In the past, we've asked for things, and I'll just, random example, of, we'd like to see more communication with the families. And so in response to that, there would be a newsletter that would go home from the schools, individual schools, to the families. And that was sort of determined that that would be, that that was the penultimate answer to there needs to be more communication with the schools or with the families. And, you know, I don't know about anyone else sitting here, but that was not near enough to satisfy me. So I guess, what would be the point where, how do you prove that you have met the goal that has been set? I know it's a vague question, but some examples.
No, it's actually, it's not as vague as you might think. So pieces of that, first of all, in the work that I've done, now I've done strategic planning with TMS, so I can speak to how that worked, is you've already done some communications work. So there's a survey about parent communication preferences and things like that. So, for example, I know that the parents in town who responded primarily said they use Facebook. So one of the things that we would do is, out of the strategic plan, part of that could be one of the tasks, I'll call it, I don't have the specific language they would use, but one of the tasks might be four times a month, there will be an update on Facebook. Or this type of communication will always be forwarded to families through Facebook. This type of communication would be sent in a newsletter. This kind would be sent in a different way. So it's based on family priorities established, school committee, administrator, student, all of those stakeholders weigh in on what they think should be prioritized. And then when we create those strategic objectives, there's a variety of ways that they get met. It's not just the one, well, we sent the newsletter, so that must do it.
Well, yeah, so I guess it wouldn't just be the headline of what we need to do. It's also the individual steps that would go with that headline.
And then there's measures of that progress. So I'll just keep using your example. We may decide every six months to do a communication survey to families and ask, are you getting enough? Are you getting too much? What's your preferred method? So there's ways for us to measure progress, and it's not necessarily just check the box.
Mayor Weidergardner, go ahead.
Certainly. I was very pleased to see this. It's exactly what I think is needed. I'm curious to what your vision for the school committee's role in this is. I'm assuming it's not just for the school committee.
Go for it. I would like to start with that one.
Sure.
I think we have all seen, and our community has seen, that when we do not have a deep bench in the schools and when we don't have proper planning, what I have seen for the school committee is that a lot of the decision-making that needs to happen at the school committee level is happening primarily between the chair and the superintendent. We need to do so much better than that. We all need to be involved in making decisions about how we prioritize work, how we value certain pieces of what we're providing in our district. And when we don't have a plan in place, we've already seen what happens. And no one in the community wants the decision-making that we have too often defaulted to in Greenfield schools to continue. That's how I would answer that. This provides us like a scaffolding, like a support, a safety net for being able to move forward when there are changes in leadership or a pandemic or something else.
Oh, I think you're right on that. I think more importantly, or as important, is I'm asking, is there a place in this planning process where you will seek input from the school committee as much as you would, say, faculty, students, parents, et cetera?
Absolutely. You're one of the primary driving stakeholder groups, and you also have to adopt the strategic plan.
Right.
The piece where, you know, the community priorities for the schools will be solicited, staff priorities for the schools, and that's for you folks to take into consideration as part of your input for priorities and then for you to know when you adopt the strategic plan. The administrative piece is primarily to, I mean, we give our input too, but then the administrative piece is primarily to look at what the priorities are and to talk about the ways we can make it work, like on the ground, how do you, what steps might best make this work? So you folks are one of the primary driving forces of what the plan essentially looks like at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Hollins, and then we'll actually do a motion, and we can have further discussion after that. Go ahead.
I have a question about the scope of work. Do you want me to wait for the motion? Anyway.
No, you can go ahead.
The scope of work says that you'll conduct us an audit of the organizational operational structure, and then it goes on to surveys. What's missing for me, maybe the school committee hasn't had a strategic plan, but we have debated and voted and come to consensus on goals and initiatives that we want to see in the district over the last couple of years. And I don't think we have to start this from absolute zero, like there's nothing. There's really a legacy of important interests of this committee, which, and I would like to see that as a part of the process, not just looking at the structure, but reviewing over the last couple of years, what are some priorities already that the school committee has voted. As an example, we spent a year talking about, we really wanted to have initiative for social justice and racial justice, and we talked about that, and we set up a committee. It isn't something that should just not be brought back. So there's, I would say there's about 10 areas that we really have prioritized, and at least I think that should be part of the review of thinking about a future plan.
If I may, it might not explicitly stated in the scope, but if you read through further along in our approach to the process, those things would be part of the, I would say, if you want to call it a deliverable, would be to look at where it is. We would be expecting you as a committee and the community as a whole, if there are priorities that have already been discussed and agreed upon, then by all means, we would expect those to influence discussions as the process goes along. So by all means, absolutely, that would be an expectation, you know, and us as facilitators, we as facilitators would be the ones to hopefully draw those out in the constant feedback back and forth, check-ins and the facilitation that we would do with both community, committee, administrative levels.
So I think that before we go any further, we probably should have even done it sooner. Secretary Johnson Musad's been very kind to allow the conversation to continue without a motion. I do think it's important in the motion, so I kind of wrote some stuff ahead of time for this one, to get at exactly why we're doing this, because that also seems to have been the root of the questions as well. So I would word it something like this, and we can go from here. "To provide strategic planning services to augment the goal development and superintendent evaluation processes, I move that the Greenfield School Committee negotiate with TMS Incorporated." And we can friendly amend that to death, but I would move that myself. So I would be the motion. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Ekstrom. And how about further discussion? Because you haven't spoken yet, Glenn, go ahead. Secretary Johnson Musad, and then Member Hollins.
Thank you. I'm definitely on board with the, we definitely need to have a strategic plan for this district. That makes so much sense. I think the question for me is, we know both whether TMS is the right vendor and also what's the process we use to select a vendor. So kind of on that first question, I'm curious if you can speak to Andy about TMS's experience in terms of doing equity work around racial and socioeconomic equity and embedding that in a strategic plan? And then I have a question for the superintendent.
It isn't included in here, but that was a key part of the Cambridge Mass work that we did. Cambridge is a very racially diverse community, and so that was a key focus as part of our Cambridge work that we've done for, I can get that and share that process and the actual end result with that with you, as well as some other examples. But I go to that one as the key example, as what it is that we've done on a bigger scale with a racially diverse community that was having issues like that to the forefront.
Great, thank you. And I guess, yeah, my question for you, Superintendent, is about the process. And so, you know, just to give a little context, like, I think we originally contracted with TMS when we were down a business manager. And then in the midst of the pandemic, because of the way the contract was worded, we were able to kind of add other services like communications and some special ed expertise. And now it's like the current contract is set up in such a way that we can just kind of, you know, try to add this to the current scope, and we're not kind of going out to bid. And so my question is, why this vendor and why not go out to bid to kind of see what's out there instead of just going with who's already here? Is there, and part of that question is, is there a time concern where we need to do this work so badly that we need to, you know, kind of go against this? I know we're not going against the letter of any law, but go against the spirit of a law in terms of, in terms of going out to bid?
I can speak to the urgency, and then I believe your chair could better respond to the contract piece. In terms of urgency, one, we had, thank you so much. My first meeting with all of you folks, when we signed my contract, there was already discussion about, you know, my evaluation and goals being set. And, you know, I haven't done that yet, but that's really what guides my work. So right now, I'm, well, I'm doing a little bit of day-to-day response, but we're going into the creation of the new budget, and I'm making recommendations for staffing and for programming changes, all of which are extremely significant without the map. And so I feel like there is a fair amount of urgency so that I have some idea if I'm making decisions or recommendations that are in line with the priorities of the committee. So that is, that is a real sense of urgency for me, especially given the fact that in the next two weeks, I'll be starting the budget development process with the department heads. So in terms of, you know, comfort, like I said, I've done strategic planning with TMS, so I have a comfort and I know how the plan works. And they're also familiar with the district, which, you know, I see that as a benefit. But, so, that's from my perspective.
I appreciate the chance to also answer. So what I would say is, first of all, we're going to negotiate this. This is not an add-on to the business manager piece. This would be something that we negotiate separately and do however we need to do to pay for it, even if that means going out to bid. The other piece is, I can't stress enough what I already said about, I don't want to be the primary decision-maker about things that we all should be making decisions about as a school committee. The longer that we stay without a plan in place to help our superintendent be successful, the greater the risk that we again need assistance coming out of a chaotic, unacceptable situation to try to move forward. And it's, to me, our relationship with TMS is an asset at this point in time because they have a service available to us that we desperately need. To go out to bid or whatever have you right now, to find other vendors, just takes too long. But to know that and commit to that this is a process that is dynamic and ongoing and is, whatever we do now is a foundation for building better strategic plans, improved goals that move us forward, we can, we can grow. I would like to believe, although I've never talked about this with Andy, that Andy would be equally as thrilled if Greenfield flew on its own as he would if we continued to need his services. I'll leave it there. I saw a member Hollins and then a member Karen.
I support that we have a strategic plan, and I support that we include looking at what we've already decided, our goals coming into this year. Where I'm uncomfortable, it sort of feeds into what Member Johnson Musad was saying, I'm uncomfortable in the situation where we have a contract without the finances, very specified by this committee. And then when questions come up, our business official, in the role of business official, is advising on what we're paying other members of his company. And it isn't that I'm saying anything untoward has happened, but it just makes me really uncomfortable.
I feel like that question was already answered for you.
I don't think it was.
I thought I saw a back and forth with you and Mr. Paquette earlier today where that question was already answered.
I haven't heard anything about the finances of this proposal, and that's a real concern.
I was specifically talking about decision-making. You brought up decision-making. I feel like that question was already answered.
Point of order. I think our, kind of, Robert's rules allow members to speak for a certain number of minutes, so I don't think that Member Hollins has exceeded that.
I am trying to keep the conversation on track. I don't think that's a necessary point of order. I'm asking Member Hollins to stick to the thing she's supposed to be talking about, not something that was already answered.
I'm talking about what this will cost and the.
That is a fair point of conversation. Let's talk about what it will cost.
And the structure, I raised this when we hired interim superintendent services from TMS. In the appearance of conflict of interest, how that, if a question comes up about funding, how is that going to be handled? And I don't want to vote on this until that's clear this time. Everything about the finance is clear, and who's going to answer questions? Because there needs to be a separation from the business that we're contracting with and decision-making about what we're paying as we go along.
The motion is to negotiate. The motion on the table is to negotiate.
But who's negotiating?
When we do this type of negotiating, it's the school committee with the chair, working as, in cooperation with the superintendent. And we bring it back to you as a school committee before it's approved. We do that every time.
May I say one other thing? There are things that come up, like in the last couple of May I say one other thing? There are things that come up, like in the last couple of warrants, where there's, it isn't specified enough. And, and it isn't clear, and I don't want to get into it here, but it needs to be better than we've done so far with TMS.
If I may. So regarding this and everything, just a quick, I will address this, but it also addresses the way that TMS operates in a district. And it's one of the things I think when we've talked as far as when we first were brought back here and stuff, but it's, it sounds like a cliche, but it's really true. The business office does not make decisions. It is those with budget authority that make the decisions and initiate the expense. So for the, one of the examples Member Hollins is bringing up is work that our special education expert did with the Special Education Department. That was initiated by the Special Education Director. The contract amount that we have that was approved by the school committee has an hourly rate for special projects. That was discussed and agreed to between the Special Education Director and our business, Special Education Consultant that worked for us, Dr. Ekstrom. Nowhere in the mix did it come up with a different rate or anything increased. It was all driven by the Special Education Director regarding the services that she was looking for. It would be no different with this process here, which is, we're presenting you with the concept of what it is that our strategic planning process looks like. Upon acceptance, say, of this, or if there are any changes that were determined that would want to be made, it would then be part of the negotiation process as to how is it that, again, we are looking for X, Y, Z as far as the scope of work, the deliverables that we're looking for, expectations. And then we would respond accordingly as any other vendor would. Should you even go out to look for quote solicitation regarding what it is that you're looking for, that's totally in your prerogative. But once that is determined, once the contract is signed, the business office has no decision-making input into that whatsoever. This expense here would be a decision made by the superintendent and school committee with an agreed-upon contract, with an agreed-upon amount. I'm out of the focus. I'm out of the decision-making process. I am just a facilitator of when time comes for things that's on, and when a bill comes in, that's another thing as well. If a bill came in for, say, an interim part of this service, I'm not signing off on approving it. I ultimately review it. But the sign-off would be superintendent and potentially even the school committee chair to agree that, again, these expenses were incurred and legitimate. And then also, we have the process where the full school committee, as you know, from the number of emails you get from the business office asking for people to review the warrants and come in and review it. So there are levels of internal control structure that you have in place that would make it very hard for anyone, myself included, to try and do anything inappropriate, untoward regarding financials, you know, handling of any of the finances. So I just want to explain the process that that's where it is as far as how TMS is involved in the whole process of bill paying. Are bills included, including anything regarding the contract work, the special education work that Member Hollins emailed me about earlier? And subsequently, something like this.
Member Karen, go ahead.
So many thoughts now. I think that this is a really, really important thing we need to do. And if I was coming in as a new superintendent, I would really want it to happen because as a district, we've struggled with our past evaluation process because we didn't have, we had goals without clear directives, and I think that that's what we're going to get out of this, is clear task and directive. I do understand the hesitation to sign again with TMS, not for any personal reason, because it feels like in the past 18 months, we've had to make constant, quick decisions without having to be like, do our bid process or whatever. I've been very comfortable with the services we've received. Absolutely, that's not at all. But I can see that discomfort coming from this place of like, again, I have to make this decision because we have to hurry. And it doesn't always make, some people feel more uncomfortable with that than others, and I respect that. I will definitely vote for this. I definitely want to hear, this is a negotiation, that's what I keep hearing, it's a negotiation. You could come out with a different answer, but I totally support getting this done because I agree with the chair as well. There's, all this pressure is in place in this point that we need to spread the pressure out. It's time. And I'm not going to get to work on it all the way, but maybe I'll just keep showing up at public comment.
You'll keep showing up. Member Hall.
I, I think that the public needs to be aware that on the warrants that we have to sign off on, it seems like every week. I don't know if it's that often, but that's what it feels like. It has, from the screws that they buy at Staples and Abashans, to the picking up, fixing the buses, every single thing that's spent by the schools. Four people on this committee have to approve those expenditures before they can happen. So there is no secret stuff being done, in my estimation. And I think that the services that we have gotten from TMS have been extraordinary. It helped us at a time that we were drowning as a school committee and unable to go forward. People came and helped pick us up and get us on the road toward improving the schools. So I am going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Member Hall. Secretary Johnson Mossad.
I have a question and then a comment. I guess I'm confused because I think I heard you say, Chair Priati, that we will have to do, go out to bid, but then I think I heard maybe we won't. So what is the procurement process if this is separate from our existing contract?
Well, we're not going to do anything we're not allowed to do. We're going to figure out what we need to do based on the price structure that is coming in and the length of the contract. That's why we're going to negotiate it.
I guess my question is, how can we go to negotiation with a particular vendor if we don't know that the law might require us to actually go out to bid?
We're going to follow the law.
If I may.
Okay.
Depending on, say, that this proposal, for example, if this proposal that is submitted right here now were accepted as, okay, this is what we would like, then we as an organization would be, would take this, we would go back, and then we would respond to you saying, the scope of this work, what is that you are looking for, would cost you X amount of dollars. Once that dollar amount is determined, then we go and see where that falls in the 30B procurement requirement. This is then saying, it very well may not be able to be accepted without solicitation of other two quotes. You're absolutely right, you know, or even potentially, you know, it's over $50,000 that requires an actual formal bid, you know. So I'm not saying that it's going to cost that, but I'm just saying that, you know, though, there are thresholds in procurement that would then determine as to whether or not you can take one as sound business practices, or you could then require to solicit three quotes, you know. So once it is that whatever is determined to be agreed upon, then we would respond back. And then our response would be, okay, look, if you're asking for TMS's cost for what it would be, it would be $32,000. You can't accept that. You would then have to solicit other two quotes, at least from other two vendors, to then be able to compare and see whether or not it is the best, you know, for what it is underneath the quote 30B procurement requirement processes. So that's the process. So it's, you know, it is not necessarily, we're not signing anything here as a done deal. It's whatever is agreed to regarding strategic plan, then we would go back and say, okay. And then I would respond and say, for us to do this work, it would cost X amount. And then that would determine whether or not solicitation of other two quotes, or you could accept it, or if it were to be over that threshold amount, to actually have to go out and formally bid.
Okay, I think I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment to make the scope that is negotiated narrow enough to just kind of, for essentially a one-year plan, for the superintendent to have enough guidance from us that we can evaluate her and she can see what we're wanting in terms of the upcoming budget process, but that we defer a bigger project, a bigger kind of multi-year plan process to next year when we can actually, you know, plan to go out to bid.
Are you saying to negotiate for strategic planning services in fiscal year '22?
Just a one-year strategic.
A one-year strategic plan. I mean, it's kind of vague. It's just saying negotiating to augment the goal development and superintendent evaluation process, I would say, I would say to develop a one-year strategic plan and superintendent evaluation process.
I guess before I would accept the friendly amendment, I would want to ask Christine if that's workable. Why are we putting a timeline on it like that? I don't understand.
Well, I think what we've been told is that, you know, we're, I mean, we're unclear about whether we're, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of an odd motion that's on the table because we're being asked to negotiate with TMS. I think what we're being, what we're asking is for more information from TMS about what a strategic planning process would look like and what it would cost. And depending on how it costs, we're not negotiating with them a contract. If the cost is too high, we're going out to bid, and we have to look at other vendors. So that's, this is the needle I'm trying to, I guess, and the other part that I'm trying to thread is feeling a little uncomfortable with, you know, the superintendent has worked with them before, we've worked with them before, we're all very comfortable with them. But are there other vendors out there that are more diverse or have a deeper perspective?
I will remind you again about the concern around time.
So, thank you for the thought. But anyway, that's my main, that's the needle. I'm trying to thread with my thinking, you know. That's what I wanted to share.
So, are, when, because I want to make sure that I understand what you're saying. So when you're saying for one year, it would be one year that they would work with us, or one year that the plan would be developed for? Because my understanding is, they're going to develop the plan and hand it over to us by March of 2022 for three- to five-year strategic plan, whatever it is, and then it's ours. How we follow up on it is how we follow up on it. They aren't going to stay and consult with us beyond that. It's, here's the plan.
It's very hard for me to like imagine, like, voting that we should negotiate with TMS when I don't have a picture at all of like, what the scope of work is or what the cost is.
There's a proposal in the, in your packet.
But, 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 so does that have a dollar amount on it?
No, we haven't.
That's why the motion is for negotiation.
So it's like, so, may I? Like, when we were talking to the superintendents and when it was time to negotiate with Christine about, and maybe this is oversimplification, someone please tell me. We talked with Amy and said, okay, this is the range, or whatever it was, and then Amy went ahead. We'd already decided that she was the person that we were going to use, and that may not be the case now. It may be that Christine came back and said, no, I want $300,000 a year, and then we would have had to go out and continue our look. Excuse me, my mask keeps getting stuck in my mouth. This is, this is essentially, we are going, we've, we've done some investigation, and this is the work that we're interested in doing. The question in front of us is, is this group interested in doing that work? And interested in, are pursuing a discussion about what the cost of that work will be with TMS, unless I'm incorrect?
Thank you.
Member Hollins.
If we're starting this, if we're just starting to negotiate, we're almost in November, and we're going to get this in March and then have to review it. Realistically, this isn't going to help our new superintendent for the year that we're in. It's a plan for the future. So my original comment that we have plenty of goals for this year that we've already agreed, I think, makes sense. But my comment is, how much can we afford for a strategic plan? So we're all in agreement, we need one. And where will it be paid from? Because in a way, it reminds me of, I mean, if we can afford $15,000, let's ask for a $15,000 plan. If we can afford $25,000, let's ask for $25,000. So I'm interested in what can we afford and where are we going to pay for it from? And we could give some direction to the motion since they can adapt the plan. And that makes more sense to me than saying, go have a plan, and then we'll tell, we'll find out what it is. What can we afford? Let's ask for a plan that's for that amount. And I think for this year, realistically, at least take time, whatever we ask, it's not going to be done for this year.
I appreciate that comment. I do think the afford piece could probably be something we ask the Budget Subcommittee to talk about at their meeting next Tuesday. I think that's totally appropriate.
I, I think a three-year plan that begins after this year gives everybody time to develop the plan, negotiate everything. But for this year, I don't see that that's going to be in place.
I think just moving forward, because we're still not agreeing on even taking one step forward yet, would be the nice thing to try to do today.
The only concerns I've heard so far have to do with the amount of money, it's kind of not understanding it. But where would it be paid from?
And we have, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone on the committee, we have time to figure that out before we're actually doing anything. So it's just something, I think it's a very valid point. Yeah, absolutely. And Budget can tackle some of that on Tuesday and report back. Thank you. Other comments?
Would you restate the motion, please?
It's exactly what I was going to ask, and then, if I may, I may want to comment.
Susan Farber, do you mind restating the motion for us?
There was a friendly amendment proposed.
I don't think we accepted, I didn't accept a friendly amendment. I think we kind of just discussed it and moved on. But we can start from here, reading what you have.
In order to provide strategic planning services to augment the goal development and superintendent evaluation processes, the Greenfield School Committee, sorry, I need to start over again. The motion is that in order to provide strategic planning services to augment the goal development and superintendent evaluation processes, that the Greenfield School Committee negotiate with TMS Incorporated.
Thank you. More discussion? Mayor Reediger and then Member Karen.
I have no reason to believe that TMS couldn't do a strategic plan for us, but I think the problem with the motion is that they are named in it. And I think that's maybe what Superintendent Hollins and Member Johnson Mossad are trying to get at. It seems like there's nothing wrong with a motion that says, we know we need a strategic plan, and we should, as a school committee, agree to negotiate with a vendor out there. And there's certainly room in 30B to work with someone who you are already working with. But the threshold for what that cost is very low. At least I know that from, on the, let's say, the construction side, but it may be true on all kinds of services, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm not trying to put forward a friendly amendment. I'm just saying, if you authorize the city, I'm sorry, the school committee to negotiate with a vendor, then you can decide which RFP process or 30B process you want to go to. So that's just a comment.
Yeah, and I'll take Member Karen's thought, and then we can talk about if we need a friendly amendment. Go ahead.
I was just going to, I wonder if just changing the simple word of negotiation to ask for a quote would just alleviate a lot of this, like, by saying we're negotiating with them, I think it makes everybody, and even a public who hasn't listened to our ongoing conversation, feel like we've decided to enter contract with them versus like, we just want you to tell me how much it's going to cost. And then if it's within the procurement process and all of that, then we'll vote and decide. I think that would make everybody.
It's funny because I also know sometimes the public goes back to our motions and then asks why something is different than what we made a motion for. I do have some concern that that could happen, not a huge concern, but it could, it's just as likely to happen if we take TMS out of the motion. You were hiding that you were trying to work with TMS. There's no win in that situation. There isn't. And I would, I would totally accept a friendly amendment to reword that piece to something more simple getting at that, hey, we really need a strategic plan. If anyone wants to suggest something, and Member Hollins, I'll take your comment.
I have a suggestion about the motion. I think the motion is where I'm struggling. It seemed like there was, anyway, what I would suggest is that our motion asks the Budget Committee to determine what the range of what the district can afford for strategic planning. planning. And, and at the same time, ask TMS for a few price structures related to strategic planning.
That's not really the scope of the budget committee's work.
I have a friendly amendment.
Please.
I'll say the friendly amendment and then why I'm making it. I moved that the Greenfield School Committee, I think it was Member Karen was, or maybe the mayor was saying, seek a quote from TMS Incorporated. And the reason why I'm saying, leaving TMS Incorporated in there is I think it's just more honest. I mean, that's what we're planning to do. We're not actually planning to do a broad request, or that's not, doesn't seem like the committee's intent is to do a broad survey of providers. But at this point, seeking a quote from TMS.
Or multiple quotes, you know?
Can you just do the motion, the friendly amendment part again, Glenn? I'm sorry.
It was to strike, negotiate with TMS and say, seek a quite, a quote from TMS Incorporated. Leaving the rest as is.
I am, I am accepting of that friendly amendment. And who was my second?
Second?
Yeah. Okay. So I think we're good on that. Do we have further discussion? I feel like we've, I feel like this was important discussion. I know that it's hard to move forward on things like this and I'm grateful for the opportunity to try.
If I just may, Chair Prorietti, regarding Member Hollins, a question about multiple quotes, because the fact that you're talking to quote process, it doesn't need to be explicitly stated, but I would say that vendors would be able to come back to you and we would, since it's in there and stuff, regarding a multiple tiered option as to what, you know, various levels.
For this amount, you get this, for this amount, which is what you said would be the outcome of negotiating and it links in with how much money we have.
Correct.
That was my thought.
Thank you both. Are we ready to vote? Secretary Johnson Musad, would you be so kind?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, yes. Chair Prorietti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Andy, run quickly. Run. Andy has two other schools to go to tonight, so fly fast. And thank you. Okay, so we are moving on to agenda item number three, which is approval of minutes from two previous meetings. And I do want to, as a part, just make a note for the committee on this one. We met September 23rd. What did we do at that? That was our rescheduled meeting, was that right? What was that? Which one was that?
That one resulted in public session. It wasn't necessary for the school committee to vote to approve the interim principal at Discovery School of Four Corners, but we kind of weighed in on it.
Okay, so I was actually incorrect. I was talking with the superintendent earlier and I said, I believe that we had not had any special meetings in September. I'd forgotten about that one. So we unfortunately have not, we have had at least one additional meeting every month since March of 2020. We only had one, so we're making progress. I feel rested, don't you all?
Yeah, much better than every 48 hours.
Really? Much better than, yes. Okay, so moving on to the vote. Let's have a motion to approve both the minutes from September 13th and September 23rd as a consent item.
So moved.
That was Member Hollins and a second from Member Wall. Any discussion about either set of minutes?
I will abstain from both because I was not at either meeting.
Okay, and you are free to do that. Just remember, because you are an elected member of the school committee, you are allowed to vote on them even, you can vote in favor or against, even if you weren't here. That's a note for everyone, not just the mayor. I know you know that. Okay, any further discussion? All right, and we can do, we don't have to do roll call votes in this case. Anyone opposed to the minutes? Anyone abstaining?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner and all others, I'm assuming, are approving the minutes with a yes vote? Yes. Okay, we can move forward to public comment. Anyone here to make a public comment tonight? Susan Farver, does anyone indicate that we're making a public comment? It looks like maybe we do have someone. Yes?
The order I have, Susan Wargatik first and Elizabeth second.
Susan, go ahead. Just state your full name and your, your town that you live in, and then you have three minutes. And take some chocolate.
Is this on? Yes, it is. Okay. Hello. My name is Susan Wargatik. I live at 45 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. And I want to speak to the public comment presentation that is going to be later as part of this meeting. There have been a number of times when I have participated in public comment where I have tried to figure out how to put something that I thought was important for the committee to consider onto an agenda that didn't have it on the agenda. And I took a look at the Mass Association of School Committees' comments about public comment. And what they say is topics for discussion should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. That is different than being on the agenda. I, you know, when I've, when I've been told that I was out of order, I kind of got the sense that this was all about me. And actually, it's not about me. It's about you. If I were in your position and there were a policy that was working well for the teachers, working well for the administrators, but not working so well for parents and for kids, and you had not heard about it, I'd want to hear about it. And that might not be on that agenda, but it would be something that you should want to hear. So that, I think, this is a vital change that you should make, to make sure that it is within the scope of your authority, but not necessarily on the agenda. Because as a result, you will hear things that if you don't put them on, if you don't have, hear them, will sit and will fester and will show up. And if this were the case of the DPW and I would, and there was a sign that said I could not talk about potholes, and suddenly a car went into a pothole and got totally wrecked and the town was in, was being sued for a lot of money, someone would say, why did not someone say something? And that's what I'm hoping that that public comment helps to do, is have people, give them the opportunity to say something so that you know about it, you can then deal with it, and you can then make the appropriate arrangements or investigation. So that is the reason I believe that that should be a serious change in the public comment policy. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Other public comment this evening? Right, someone? Elizabeth? Was that the name? Go ahead. We just need you to state your full name and the town you live in, and you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Elizabeth Denis and I live in Greenfield. I'm making a public comment today to express my opinion about the way the committee handles the public, the public comment portion of the meetings. Parents have many concerns that are never added to the agenda. Parents feel mistrust and frustration when their comments are not valued. Why should people bother to come here and interact with the committee if they feel like it is a waste of their time? You might feel as though the community has ample opportunity to express themselves, but what is the point if it isn't taken under advisement? Being elected to hear pertinent issues and help to make changes in our school district is so incredibly important. And we are grateful for all that you take on. We, the public, want to help you accomplish goals by bringing issues forward that you should be aware of. The public are essentially your helpers, and we must bring forth issues that are timely and of importance to all, regardless of what is deemed fit for the agenda. Public needs should be one of the guiding forces behind setting it. I support the recommendation of the policy subcommittee. And I'm going to take some chocolate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hello, just state your name and the town you live in. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Catherine Martini and I live in Greenfield. And I am here to speak in support of improving Greenfield School Committee's public comment policy. I am a parent in the Greenfield School District and I feel that the current policy is overly restrictive and also undemocratic. As a parent, there are issues that I would like to be able to bring to the committee's attention and to the attention of those who follow the committee's meetings. But that's impossible under a policy that suppresses speech about anything that is not already on the committee's agenda. I feel that a two or three-minute public comment from a few interested citizens, held to standards of decorum, would not pose any major inconvenience to the committee and may well make its work more effective through newfound awareness of what the community cares about and is experiencing in Greenfield schools. On a practical level, improving this policy will increase the community's participation when people feel that the committee is more open and genuinely interested to their input. And on a, on a principle level, valuing public comment is democracy in action and will demonstrate this committee's commitment to that value. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. State your name and town you live in. You have three minutes.
Doug Zelwyn, Greenfield. First, I want to, I also want to talk about public comment. So I want to echo what's already been said and I won't say it again. I do want to say that I and many others in the community often feel like, there's a sense, at least from some of you, that, that the meetings would be much smoother for you if we didn't show up. And whether that's an intentional thing you're communicating or whether simply what, what comes through, makes many of us feel like the public is not as welcome as, as we would like to be. So I'm hoping that the policy that's being suggested this evening will open up and be more inviting to the public and that we feel that. I have a couple of suggestions I would like to, to offer about, about public comment. One has to do with recognizing that the timing of these meetings are at dinner for most families and most families in the district have kids they have to care for. And since there's neither childcare nor, at this point, I understand broadcast or, or ways to be involved electronically, it makes it really difficult for people to communicate or to be part of the meeting. So I'm wondering if there can be childcare offered so that people who would like to attend and who have kids can do that? Or can they be involved? Can we continue to have people be involved digitally so they can watch their kids and take part in the meeting? So that's one thing. The second is, has already been mentioned about, about making sure we can communicate when, whatever the issue is, whether it's on your agenda or not. Third, I wonder if there could be specific meetings set up for public comment. Where there's not business, it's simply public comment and that people alternate attending those so that you're not all having to be at all these meetings. I know you have way too many already. But that there's time to actually have dialogue with the public. We, the public, are the ones whose kids are being educated and we have to be part of that conversation for it to work. And right now, I think you can see how many people aren't in the room to recognize that right now that communication is not happening in a public way. So setting up a time for that kind of communication with that expressed purpose might be useful. And perhaps some of those meetings could happen around town, up at Lyden Woods or Greenfield Gardens or other places where, where people are rather than having them come here because transportation, we know in this town is pretty marginal, public transportation. And so a lot of people may not be able to get here. So those are my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? I think everyone in the room spoke except the recorder, reporter, right? So we're good. Okay. Mary, did you want to add anything? All right, we are, oh, where's Shane?
I don't know.
Our next thing on the agenda is the report of our student representative to the committee, to the committee. And Shane, to me, is normally very dependable, but he is not here. So we will move on without him. I hope he's okay. Maybe he's, no, he's too young to be inducted. Our other student representative, oh, our other student representative, whose name I'm forgetting because she's new.
Brielle.
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 Is getting inducted into National Honor Society, right, tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Brielle Widello is being inducted into NHS this evening and Karen Patnold has been asked to be their speaker. So that's why she's not here.
That's why they are not here. Okay, so we will, we will move on, but that's good news for them. And so we have a report from ASKP by way of, that's the Assistant Superintendent Karen Patnold, ASKP, that's my nickname for her, in case you haven't caught on to that yet. And we do have that in the materials for this evening. And there's also a report from the superintendent. And I will let Christine handle those however she sees fit.
Well, I guess I would ask if there's certainly no need for me to read Karen's report to you, but if there are any questions, I would be happy to respond.
Are there any questions? I just, I just was super impressed with how things seem to be coming together at all levels, like there's planning around curriculum.
I was going to say, you'd almost think we had planned that.
It's, I was smiling as I was reading it, that's for sure. Yeah, so thank you for, for all of that effort. And thank, please thank ASKP for us.
I thank her frequently.
And I guess the other thing I would make, anyone else? Comments, questions? Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, to...
No, just to comment, just to kind of, I mean, it's, I felt oxygen going into my lungs reading her report. It's just so good that something is happening, the way she's thinking about it and it seems so systematic and addressing things that have needed to be addressed for a long time. So thanks to both of you for that effort.
I guess I would like to agree with what he said. And I was especially happy to see the, the report on curriculum development updates and continue hopefully to see those. It's something we just, at least in my tenure, haven't received.
I would like to share, yes, you will. However, it's going to be a little while.
Yeah, I understand. I didn't mean every meeting, just as it's appropriate.
We're at the beginning of that work and we've been able to, I think, one of the things that we are focusing on at the administrative level is collaboration and consistency. So when you see work about curriculum, when you see professional development planning, it is done from the district perspective. So buildings are not doing, our elementary schools are not doing curriculum work isolated from each other. They are working together because they will be using the same curriculum maps and teaching the same units across the board. We are using the same resources in all of the elementary buildings. So, you know, there's a lot of collaboration. It is something that the teachers have expressed relief in seeing, that they're able to collaborate with their grade level or subject level peers. So we're pleased with that. And we are keeping that consistency from, in a vertical alignment as well. So as the elementary is working on curriculum, so is the middle school, so is the high school. And it's, I think it's quite a pleasant surprise or pleasant... And it's, I think it's quite a pleasant surprise or pleasant experience for the staff that not only are they coming back to what we're calling a normal year, for lack of anything else to call it, but we're calling it a normal year after so much upheaval and disconnection, they are actually able to meet in departments or grade levels. So I think it's an added bonus for them, I hope. So.
Further questions or comments about either the Assistant Superintendent or the Superintendent's report? I have one question.
And I have one statement. But go ahead.
Do your statement first.
I wanted to clarify something from our last meeting when we talked about communications, when community members email the school committee as a whole and how we would want to respond so that all of you are aware of the fact that the community members are actually answered and to make sure that I'm responding in a way that's consistent with the district and that we're all sort of working in the same direction. Attorney Dupere had expressed some concerns about the blind CC of the committee on that. In one respect, it was unfortunately not really meeting one of the goals that you as a committee had stated, that the community member would know that you were seeing the response because they wouldn't see you copied on the response. But Attorney Dupere strongly suggested that I respond and copy the chair and then forward my response to all of you and tell the community member that I would be forwarding the response so that you would all see that. I have, I did that twice today in response to.
I was going to say, you started that in practice.
I did and I, well, these were the first school committee-directed emails since we've had that conversation, I think, or at least since I had the conversation with Attorney Dupere. So I apologize that I had to do it before I could update you, but certainly I wanted to respond to the community member in a timely manner. So that was the only update I wanted to share with you in terms of why that little shift, but.
Any further concern or discussion on that point? I appreciate the follow-up and hopefully that meets the goals that the committee had in terms of communication. My question, anyone else, anything? I just have, so I am seeing in your report and in other reports that we get numbers, data, which we didn't regularly get as a normal course of business previously. And I know you and I had talked about some questions that we've heard around enrollment and we had, you and I briefly discussed, we need to do an enrollment study. Maybe I have the term wrong.
We should do enrollment projections, yes.
And I know how busy you have been in your first few weeks here. Do you have a timeline or a plan or any additional thoughts about that at this point? I want to bring it up more so that the committee knows. I feel like also I should say that every time the superintendent and I meet, there's a discussion of we have to do an assessment of this, we have to do an assessment of that, we have to do, so there's a lot of this going around and I know you are only one person, so any thoughts or timeline on that?
There are two, yes, there is a thought of that, sorry, but yes, I am thinking about that. I'm feeling urgently about two separate pieces, honestly, that I think are coming to the top when I think about the work that I need to do first. One of which is the enrollment projections because that will impact decisions we make about staffing, about resources as we move forward. And then the second is our desired use of technology. So I've been talking with Carol, our technology director, and we have been talking with Fernando Flurry, the IT Director for the city, and there are so many elements where our technology will drive additional questions and resource expenditures. And I'm trying to think of a way to explain this without pulling all of you inside my brain because you don't want to be there. All of the things that we're doing intersect and they all impact each other. So it's hard to talk about our curriculum updates without thinking about how we would want to use technology to enhance instruction. But then when you talk about technology, we have a lot of devices that we're using that are coming to end of life either this year or the end of next year. And that represents a substantial financial commitment from the school committee. So we need to make decisions about what technology will serve our instructional needs before we purchase devices to replace what we have. So the technology assessment or planning and the enrollment projections, to me, are the two most critical in terms of big picture impact. So I would like to do those in the next, begin that process, you know, hopefully before the next committee meeting or at least have all the information we need to move forward.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No, it's been in my head. It's the emergency I'm having.
Well, I think it's important for the school committee to hear that, you know, we're moving away from making decisions in isolation without having data on hand.
Yes, absolutely.
And enrollment projections, I have not seen in my time on school committee.
Used to get them.
Did we see them at all last year? I don't think we did.
I don't think we did last year, but I do remember getting them.
Yeah.
Because we needed them to discuss.
I remember watching.
How many we could put in for choice.
Yeah.
So we did used to get them, but.
Yeah. Remember Hollins?
So if I can just, generally when we think about enrollment projections, that's generally a future?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing because that's not typically something that gets revisited annually.
No, and for me, right, for me at least, it came up as we hear this tale of, well, if every student that choice out of Greenfield wanted to come back at the same time, we wouldn't have enough spaces. That wouldn't happen.
No, likely not.
But where are our spaces? What do those spaces look like? What are our projections moving forward? All of that. So helpful. Yeah, remember Hollins, please, go ahead and then remember Karen.
Yes, I completely agree with what you're saying. We have received, in my recollection, some enrollment reports, but they're confused because we get the foundation report, which is all the students we're responsible for before they go, wherever they go to school. And then it confuses how many students are actually attending your school and then of the ones that are attending, how many are choice and how many aren't. So we've gotten some information, but nothing that helps us with the district budget, in my opinion. And I really appreciated the homeschool data. And one of the things that makes it hard, projections in Greenfield, is there's so much low-income housing, people placed who need it and there's a lot of flow. I think it's around maybe 200 children a year coming and going and moving in and it's hard to have stability of projections, so it'll be a challenge. But on that, I was, we do have an October 1 report, so we have to file that. That would be interesting to see. And what I wanted to ask is with technology, what I noticed looking at the warrant is how many interesting computer application programs we have. We used to get a list from Carol, who's really good about lists, and it would say, you know, here's all the programs we have and what they cost for administrative functions, here's all the programs that are first. And what I noticed is all these new programs, like there was one recently, something for athletic games where people can watch the games from home. It's just there's so many new and different things. That would be interesting to see again along with the issues of what equipment do we want? The applications that we use just seems to be.
Well, and.
Which is good, but they're new and different, understanding them.
And one of the things that I intend to present to the committee when we do the, when I share the superintendent's budget is which applications we will be looking to keep. Because along with the thinking that technology, you should enhance instruction, the applications that we have should serve that as well. And we will be looking at use of all of the current programs that we have. Are we using them? Where are they being used? What is the instructional goal? And if we are not using them grade level-wide at all three buildings, if it's not integrated into our curriculum, we're going to be making decisions to let some of those go. We have had a structure where individual buildings made individualized decisions, but if we're looking to improve our core curriculum and our core instruction, we need to decide how best to access and utilize resources. And the individual, I like this versus this serves this important instructional goal is something we're going to have to talk about. So, but sometimes it's wonderful to have so many options because it serves the needs of some students with some very diverse interests. So it's really a balancing act of what opportunities we can provide versus what do we have to have to. So you will definitely get a list of.
I support those initiatives. They're really important.
Thank you.
And the city used to give us about 200,000 to 250,000 a year for technology under capital planning and it stopped about five years ago. And at that point, there were an awful lot of financial strains as well for different reasons and I completely mention that all the time, like how come this year we had 14,000 for technology equipment? What are we doing? So, but it used to be that we had an amount for planning every year that went away.
Within the next two years, we'll have about 800 devices that hit end of life. So that's not a great spot for us to be in for technology.
Remember Karen, you had something? Yeah, go ahead.
I was thinking about the projection and I think the thing, the last time I saw a true projection was when I was on the STAR Committee, which was actually pre my school committee term, when we were discussing what was happening, the first initial pass at Green River School. So that's got to be six years ago, like a true long-range projection. It's somewhere, but that was probably the last time I saw one. But the other thing I wanted to, unrelated to the technology, another thing is I wanted to briefly, very briefly have you tell us about the pooled testing that is happening now with our own staff because I'm just getting questions about it and I just want you to tell everybody that doesn't get our email updates, you know, they just may be part of the community but wondering what's happening with that.
So as I have reported in the parent update, but as you referenced, not everybody's a parent. Greenfield, like every other community pretty much in Massachusetts, is experiencing some staffing issues related to the pooled testing. So Department of Education partnered with CIC, which is a vendor who's overseeing this process, and CIC is experiencing staffing shortages. So they were not able to provide the resources that they had originally shared would be able to be provided. So rather than wait, our nursing, our head nurse, Kelly, and our nursing staff and our health assistants have begun a schedule to do pooled testing for our students. Because of the staffing that we have and the other issues that our nurses have to deal with day-to-day, temporarily Kelly has had to modify the schedule. Instead of being weekly testing, it's every other because she's trying to do, for example, elementary one week, secondary the other. She is making sure to get our athletes tested. You know, they're in a high-risk environment, they're unmasked for their activity, so she's prioritized making sure they are getting done. She and I have been communicating with the man who's in charge of CIC. We learned that we had been assigned to a vendor who had a less successful track record than other vendors, so we are in the process of swapping. They've reassigned us to a different vendor. That second vendor is in the process of onboarding additional staff so that they can serve us. The, so we're in a state of flux, so our staff is still doing the pooled testing along with the ongoing test and stay protocol and with the ongoing testing of our students or staff who might be exhibiting symptoms. So those two pieces are still happening every day. The only other option at this point that we could explore, although we have not been identified as one of the primary districts, is the National Guard has been called up to assist. A superintendent's meeting with the commissioner was held today in which Karen attended on my behalf because I was already scheduled. But what was shared is that districts who had not already started pooled testing would be prioritized for the National Guard, but that we could reach out to request assistance. I am inclined to reach out to request assistance because we are killing our nursing staff. I'm not sure it is widely known, the work that is happening by our nursing staff and the hours that they are working to try to support the staff and students and to do the pooled testing that, you know, we need to have to improve our health in the schools, but it's really taxing the staff that we have. We are still looking for substitute nurses to assist, just to assist in the district with the health needs. And on top of all that, Kelly Savitri is working with me on policy modifications, communicating with the Department of Public Health and doing all the other pieces that a nurse leader would do. So I will reach out to make the request for National Guard assistance, but I'm not sure where we will fall on that list. So does that.
Thank you.
Isn't it always the way that the ones who do the most to do things right are then the ones who get put at the bottom of the list when there's resources?
Well, I sort of said to Karen today, it's, you know, we tried to do the best thing that we could and we unfortunately kind of short-chained ourselves at the end because if we hadn't done anything, we could have the most assistance, but now we're sort of in this weird catch-22.
We're doing the best we can every week.
Absolutely. And I still applaud the nursing and the health-related staff for getting in there and starting rather than waiting for the state resources.
Glenn, you look like you had a comment.
I have an editorial. It's just the governor mandating in-person learning without actually having evaluated the resources in terms of pooled testing and saying it's going to be there for us and then it's not. I really sympathize with parents who are like, take a principled stand and just, you know, do something else, but unfortunately our hands are tied there. But I totally sympathize with the feeling that their children are being made to come to school in person and the pooled testing isn't there and it's not our fault, but it's just that mandate was there before the resources were in place, so.
Very well said, yes. Any further for the superintendent? Thank you.
You're welcome.
So next we have the chair's report, where this is the school committee reports. I'm going to be brief. I just want to make sure that we all are knowing about the processes that go on annually for capital improvements. Because we all know what happened last year with capital improvements and we want to do a better job every year, I want to be able to say we did this better than we did the year before. It's a low bar, but that's the bar I have right now. So capital improvements is starting up. We have a timeline and we have all of the documents related to it and those are all public documents that you can get from the city finance department or we also have them and you can get them easily from me or any other school committee member if you want to look at them. The next target date is just two weeks away and we are giving our capital information to the city at that point, right, our requests, basically. And then after that, they schedule a series of kind of meetings around how everything would get done. There is what I would call a seasonal committee that comes together this time of year, the Capital Improvement Committee, which is not planning and construction, another city committee, and it's not Ways and Means and it's not a school committee thing, but we have school committee representation. And so that is going to begin meeting to make decisions around these things. And I'm just mainly just saying, hey, this is the time of year it is. So if you're aware of something. So if you're aware of something that we would request as a school committee, as a capital project, that you know we don't maybe already know about or you aren't sure, talk to the superintendent or talk to me within the next week or so so we can make sure those get on there. But honestly, I think our priority will be to try and get tackled many of the capital improvement projects we've already indicated and go from there. I just wanted to kind of put that out there and let folks know that this is the process that is happening and that we are included in as a citywide process. And I don't know, yeah, Mayor Rita Gardner, do you want to add anything?
I just would add that in my weekly discussion with Liz Gilman, our finance director, she did say today that she would be reaching out first to the Capital Improvement Committee with a doodle poll as to what days you would be, they would be available to begin the series of meetings. And then we, then we schedule department heads as they are available. So just be expecting multiple doodle polls. The other thing I would like to...
I can't wait.
Yeah, I know. The other thing I would like to remind school committee members of, capital expenditures are not curriculum items. They're not technology applications. They're not things that you can fund through your and should be funding through your general budget. They are buildings and structures and those kinds of things that, as a general rule, have very high-ticket numbers, need to either be involved in borrow, you know, that you might have to borrow for or that you might have to take some money out of capital stabilization for.
Thank you. And that is really my report for tonight. I had a couple of other things I want to talk about, but they are not urgent and they will come up in a normal order of business. So we can move on at this point to subcommittee reports. Monthly meeting schedule? I've seen activity around meetings. And so I'm wondering how many of the subcommittees that are meeting, is that going to be like your regular meeting time? Like budget, nine o'clock on Tuesdays? Would it be the third Tuesday of the month that you're doing?
I imagine that makes sense.
Okay, because... Okay. I just want, I want to be able for us, we've talked about this already, but so people can follow along who are listening. I want to be able to make sure. And that was 10:00 AM, right? Third Tuesday, 9:00 AM, sorry. Policy and program, did you guys set a monthly meeting time?
I believe it's the second Friday, 1:00 PM to 2, 2:00 or 2:30 PM.
One to two, thank you. Health safety facilities, is that Fridays at 10?
Fridays at 11:30.
And it's what, the second Friday?
It's actually the third Friday.
Third Friday, sorry. Did you say 11?
I said 11:30, but I think that was, there was a reason we couldn't meet till 11:30. There's one specific one. We could shift that as needed. We can talk about that more in depth at our meeting, but 11:30 worked.
Thank you. And then personnel, collective bargaining, that was the one I missed. Second Friday, 10:00 AM, is that what you guys did, right? It was last week?
We did. I don't know if that's a permanent...
We'll pretend it is for now, just so we can move forward and say we did it. Second Friday at 10:00 AM. And if that doesn't work, we'll change it. But even, even if it doesn't, we've got one, two, three out of four already that are moving forward. Racial justice, redistricting, you guys meeting? It's okay if you're not.
We're not. I think the goal was to get those kind of regular committees up and running and then add those. And then I think that there are some broader discussions the committee might want to have about those, so.
Want to put that on the November agenda to talk about restructuring those? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. And for folks that are trying to follow what we're talking about, racial justice advisory, ad hoc committee, the redistricting, ad hoc committee have been now joined by, there is a, many folks in the community are interested in also looking at an earlier start time to the school day for our older students, possibly middle school, starting with high school. Did I not talk about this with you yet?
No, but I'll pretend we did.
And the first thing that I thought of when that was brought to me is it could potentially really be a social and racial justice issue to change start times, depending upon how it impacts families. So that needs to get added to the mix. And I think restructuring might include all three of those things in one committee, but I don't want to make that decision. I want to have a discussion about it. So that's why we're talking about it. Okay. And I'm just making a note that I won't know what it says. When I go to look at it later. I don't know why I make notes, just to make it look like I'm doing something important. Okay, we are moving on. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Member Hollins, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. I thought the restructuring was really looking at elementary and the early...
No. Of the time, start times?
No, and the start time was high school.
I wasn't talking about that. Yeah, start times, restructure, the restructuring of the district is elementary schools. I'm talking about something separate. There's a group that has asked us to look at earlier start times for the middle and high.
I was just clarifying it was two different...
Two different things.
Issues.
Yeah. Okay. Personnel, collective bargaining, subcommittee report. It looks like we have a couple of job descriptions to look at.
Yes, please.
Yes, please. So we have in the packet for tonight, two job descriptions that were approved last week by Personnel and Collective Bargaining, Director of Behavioral Services and then a Restorative Practice Facilitator. And I think if you printed your materials or you're looking, everybody's got printed materials. If you printed your materials on your own, you'll want to refer to the Behavioral Services Director item that is in the packet that was here, that was brought by the superintendent. Because it'll be different than whatever you printed. If you printed it earlier, that was like a track changes copy that was really hard to read. The one in the materials is a track changes copy, but there is a nice copy on your desk that you can refer to. How do we want to do this? So let's do them one at a time. This is why I make notes. Hold on.
How about you talk about the larger scale picture before we discuss?
Oh, I would love that. Are you prepared to talk about that?
Absolutely.
Just interrupt me.
I won't.
I do.
You two can do whatever. I'll sit here quietly and wait until my turn.
Christine, would you be so kind as to give us an overview here of what's happening?
Yes. So very clearly, when I applied for and interviewed for this job, one of the overriding needs that you folks highlighted was for us to respond to the needs of the whole child. We also need to ensure we have equitable access to resources for all of our students. And we need to support tiered resources for our highest need students, whether it's academic or social, emotional, and behavioral. As another layer, all of this has the opportunity to positively affect our special education programs. If we have a solid foundation for supporting our social, emotional, and behavioral needs and address concerns earlier, then we have the potential to reduce the numbers of students who are in our special education programs for social, emotional, and behavioral needs. We're not going to eliminate that, but we need to tier services to address students earlier when we see concerns starting to surface. So part of supporting our core, our tier, you know the triangle? I keep doing this because in my head, I always have the triangle. So the core, the bottom part of our triangle, which is supposed to meet the needs of 80% of our learners. We also need to provide a social, emotional curriculum and type of behavioral support that will address approximately 80% of our learners. So when we get to students who are experiencing challenges, whether it's with attendance, behavior, academics, but primarily emotional and behavioral, one of the ways to address their needs is through a philosophy called restorative practice, where you have a positive environment. That's part of our social, emotional learning curriculum is to establish the positive environment. And then the response to behavior is to help the student understand how they could have responded differently. We're giving them resources to respond to their dysregulation in a different, more productive way. And then we also work with our staff so that they interact with students at their most challenging and dysregulated times in the most supportive and productive way possible. This does not equate to having no consequences. It's not the same. This isn't, everybody gets a hug no matter what they did and they go back to class. It is far from that. But it's natural consequences and helping students understand there are different options. It also involves us working with students and families to help them overcome obstacles that either we unintentionally put in their way or they're dealing with outside of school, but that we can help them to address. Could be something as small as we have a student, well, it's not small, but easily addressed as a student who acts out in class every day during math because they don't have technology at home and our high school math textbook is an online resource. But they may respond to that issue by acting outwardly instead of having the resources to go to the teacher or to the administrator to say, "I don't have a computer at home." So that's ensuring we have equitable access. It's also talking with them about, hey, what's going on? You seem like you're having a hard time in math every day. It's establishing relationships. But people need to have help in doing that. It's not something that we can just wing it with. We need to have structures established. We need to have trainings. And when students are the most heightened, staff becomes stressed too. I mean, it's a stressful situation when you have a student acting out pretty significantly. The best-intended people, we all react with a stress response when we're faced with a challenging situation. That's not, that doesn't suggest staff is doing anything wrong. That's a natural reaction. But when both parties are heightened, sometimes we need someone else to help guide our response to things. So the facilitator is someone that, it would be a stipend for one of our administrators to act as someone who is guiding this work. It would be someone who works with staff to create our social, emotional learning curriculum, part of that core. And someone who helps us learn how to effectively use restorative circles. That's a way to build community. It's also a way to repair the community if something has happened. So there's a lot of different complexities to it. And, you know, you need some training and some experience to do it well. It's, it's hard to do, even though we know it's the right thing to do. So that's that stipend position. The other position, the Director of Behavioral Services, is involved in this system, more so as we move up the tiers. Tier two, tier three, special education support. It's to consult with teachers about challenging behaviors. It is to consult with administrators on challenging behaviors, to provide clinical support in our therapeutic special education programs, to provide clinical supervision to our social work and counseling staff, to help establish process and protocol around responding to students in crisis, and to work with the restorative practice facilitator to ensure that our continuum from the core all the way through supporting our special education programs is consistent and collaborative. We have consultants right now that provide a lot of the support to the special education programs. There is, they are doing good work. There is huge value in having someone embedded in the district who is able to respond immediately, or very close to immediately, to a situation. They also learn our students. They learn our families, the systems, and they provide recommendations for us on policy, protocol revisions. They're also a critical part of our safety and security responses. So there's, there's layers. One helps primarily with the core and the other person responds directly to tiers two, three, and special education. See, you came right into my head with me.
Okay, so that is an overview. Are there questions about any of that? Before we move on to the job descriptions, Member Hollins, go ahead.
Thank you for explaining that. I have a question. Is this position, there was a administrator of special services and then two assistants. Does this replace one of the assistants?
No, it doesn't.
So there's an administrator of special service, two assistant administrators, and a third. Is this person in that department working with that director?
This person and reports to me. So this person supports special education, but they are not solely a special education resource. They are a district resource for all students and staff. Where I see them replacing a current resource is eventually they would replace the consultants that we have to some of our special ed programs. We would have that in-house instead of externally contracting for those services.
Just another question. What salary range are you considering?
I believe it should be approximately 95. This is an administrative level person. We need someone with extensive clinical experience. And they will be expected to take a significant level of responsibility for programming and decision-making.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead, Member Hollins.
I'm no longer clear how many school psychologists and clinical social workers we have in the district, how many people we have. But some of the people that are here have PhDs and are quite experienced. This person we're hiring, at least I think we still have some quite experienced.
Some of those folks are actually doing almost solely our academic and psychological testing as mandated under special education.
Would this person be providing clinical supervision to those people?
Not for doing testing, no. They would be providing clinical supervision to our social workers, our school adjustment counselors, and guidance counselors if they provide any counseling to students. So right now, our school psychologist, we are down one. We have an unfilled posted position. So the school psychologists we have are almost exclusively only doing testing as mandated under special ed. I believe that is accurate.
Member Exum.
So Member Hollins sort of begs the question, how much is it that we're paying for consultants? Ballpark a year, do you think?
I'm estimating. I would prefer to, well, I'd like to qualify the response because right now, some of the consulting work is replacing staff that we are not able to hire. So the consulting that we are providing, it's currently approximately 200,000, but that includes covering for a few RBTs, so behavior tax, so.
I just wanted to give everyone a little bit of more solid perspective.
I think one of the piece, yeah, thank you. I think one of the pieces that we do not currently have that this person would provide, well, number of pieces that we do not currently have this position would provide is one, clinical supervision to our counseling staff. And also the consultation on responding to heightened behavior for our building administrators who are left to their own experience in responding. And sometimes we have students who are dealing with significant mental health issues and some of their behaviors become... some of their behaviors become, you know, safety issues. You know, I don't want to get into too much in terms of specifics about our students with high needs, but there are many behaviors that are, we need to have a high level of clinical expertise responding to. And our building administrators, quite honestly, should not be in a position where they are making decisions related to some of these students, and unfortunately, they have been put in a position where they have to.
So, you're reshifting how we use the money for these services?
Ultimately, this year and next year, this position has been written into one of the ESER grants with the goal of shifting current resources to cover. I apologize, I said everything in the world about this position, except where I would pay for it. Yes. So, they're in the grant currently with the goal of shifting resources and eventually paying for it out of the local.
So, we should probably, before we have further discussion, or maybe we'll just be able to vote, have some motions. I'd like to do the two job descriptions separately. So, since we kind of started with the restorative practice facilitator, let's do that one first. Can I get a motion to approve the job description as presented for the restorative practice facilitator?
So, moved.
Secretary Johnson Musad, and the second was Mayor...
Me, I think.
Okay. Any discussion about this one? Shall we move to a vote? All right. So, we do not need to do, I'm so used to doing the roll call. Any abstentions? Any no votes? I'm assuming that is a unanimous yes from everyone. Perfect, all right. And so, I also need a motion to approve the job description as presented for the Director of Behavioral Services.
So, moved.
Ekstrom, and the second, from Member Wall. Further discussion, Member Hollins?
Under performance responsibilities, I'm not sure Greenfield has position descriptions for these adjustment counselor, social worker in the school. I'm not sure we have those job descriptions. So, maybe this person could make sure we have those that align to what their scope of service is under their license.
I will work on doing that.
And the other thing I don't think we have that seems to me goes with this is we don't, to my knowledge, have a philosophy of school-based counseling. What do we do and what isn't our role? We're not, you know, how do we do that? And is it short-term or long-term or family-based?
Absolutely.
We don't seem to have that either, so...
Yes, I agree.
Person probably should have that suggestion in their scope of responsibility to make sure we've, something like that.
That's part of the work that's beginning, is program and service descriptions. But, yes, this person would certainly weigh in on the completion of those.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Any further discussion? All right, just to, you know, make sure we're doing all right. All those in favor? Show of hands is fine. Yeah, it looks like it's unanimous. Any no's, any abstentions? That is unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
And now, we are on to Policy and Program Subcommittee, and their work. I'm going to try and get these readings right. So, we have some policies that have been reviewed. And why don't I, Glenn, is this you, you want me to pass it over to you and you can explain what we're doing, and we'll figure out a way to do the motions?
Sure, with the superintendent's help. So, there are a number of policies that we are either lacking completely, or just needing to update on a very fast timeline. And those ones, we will be asking to waive the first reading and vote by consent agenda on those policies. The one that I know that is not in that category is public participation at school committee meetings. I don't think we experience that as urgently. Like, I think we can go through the regular order and do two readings of that one. Are there any others that don't need to be done on an expedited basis, Superintendent?
I think the student conduct one you wanted to revisit, but I don't know that it requires an additional vote.
Yeah, I think the student conduct one, we had discussed a student conduct policy at a previous subcommittee, and we had agreed, at a previous full committee meeting. And we'd agreed that the policy subcommittee would kind of review it and kind of bring it forward in regular order as well. And we are actually doing that with all of our policies, working with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, getting that work back on track to overhaul all of our policies. So, that will be done. So, I don't think we're voting on the student conduct tonight at all, okay? And then, so, and I guess it's, since we could kind of do them in the order that they're listed on the agenda, maybe Superintendent, you can kind of give an overview of the ones we are asking to do on an expedited basis.
I have to find my agenda in my big mess here. Okay. So, the first is homeschooling. We have, with the assistance of Dupre Law, have condensed the three current homeschool policies into one. The three were very redundant. And so, you have the homeschool policy with some markup. I have to be honest, I am not sure why some of the documents came through electronically with markup and others did not.
It was just the one.
No, there's markup on this one as well. So, I have no idea, although it doesn't hurt for you to see the markup. So, much of the information in, what did I do in my event again? Much of the information in IHBGE was a summary of a legal decision regarding homeschooling that had been made many years ago. The salient information is already included in your policy, IHBG. So, I recommend that the committee remove that second policy. And then, the policy IHBGR was primarily redundant with IHBG. And then, we proposed two changes. The committee had previously included that students who were being homeschooled could have access to public school activities upon the approval of the superintendent. And some other language from IHBGR included that it could be at parent discretion. So, we recommend the removal of that language from the policy. And the other element that is not required by statute is that the students who are homeschooled could be awarded a Department of Education, a Greenfield Public Schools diploma, if they meet requirements. So, one of the concerns from the administrative level is that if we have students who are homeschooled accessing district resources, then the public school district is funding those resources. Karen and I are aware that in previous years, the district had allowed access to online resources, which necessitated paying for licenses, had also provided textbooks and other instructional resources to students who were homeschooled. The other piece is allowing students who are homeschooled to come in to the public schools at any time to access, during the day, curricular activities presents a liability because they're not students registered in our district, and that is not recommended by your council. So, this draft was created with the assistance of one of the attorneys with Dupre Law. So, wanted to bring it forward.
Thank you.
Did I cover everything? Great.
So, Glenn, what do you think? You want to do the homeschooling piece first?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I mean...
And, let's make sure, because I am slightly confused. So, IHBG is the homeschooling policy?
Correct.
And the other two, the dash E and dash R, are going to be absorbed into IH, the salient pieces absorbed into IHBG?
Correct.
So, we're left with just the one policy regarding homeschooling?
Correct.
Okay, so, let's have maybe a motion first, and we are doing, we're waiving the first reading on this, is that correct? Okay. Do we need to move to waive the first reading first? Is it two separate sets of motions? Move to waive the first reading and then move to approve?
I think so.
I thought that's how we had done it in the past.
Okay.
Because I think we have to say, "Yeah, we all agree to waive the first reading," or, the majority agrees, I believe.
Yeah. I am wondering, because we have another, we have, my program just crashed, but I'm wondering if we can do a move, a motion to waive the first reading of all of the ones that we're asking to waive the first reading on.
Sure. So, can I get a motion to waive the first reading of the policies under discussion? IHBG, JIC, and, no.
Not JIC.
No, I'm sorry. IHBG and JLCD. That's the only two, correct?
No, the, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess, I guess it's just IH...
Because we want to talk about...
Because we're not waiving the first reading for public participation.
Right.
Yeah, it's just IHBG.
IHBG, so let's do it again, so Susan Farber doesn't...
Yeah. And JLCD.
Oh, J, no, we're not asking, we're not asking to waive the first reading on the public participation at school committee meetings.
Right. Glenn, we're not, but we are asking for JLCD administering medicines to students.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
The two, yeah.
Misreading it.
So, a motion, please, to waive the first reading of the policies IHBG homeschooling and JLCD administering medicines to students.
Yes, and so moved.
Okay, so, if that was Secretary Johnson Musad, and a second, please.
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Ekstrom, and any discussion? Wonderful. You don't get much time.
Wait, I got, yes.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I know this is, this is, so, on IHBG, it says, the point is, prior to removing the child from public schools, should that be prior to unenrolling?
Sorry, I think that that will be when we make the motion to approve that particular one.
Okay, nevermind then.
We're on the motion to waive the first reading.
I didn't hear anything.
Thank you, Glenn, for catching that. I'm like, ooh.
Fine, fine.
Okay, so, let's just do, let's just do the vote on waiving the first reading. And let's do, why don't we do a roll call vote, just so we're clear? So, Secretary Johnson Musad, could you do that for us?
Remember Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yep.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, yes. Chair Prady.
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
May I read your argument?
Yes.
That was quick, nice work. Okay, so, we are waiving the first reading, and then, a motion to approve the policies as presented, IHBG and JCLD.
JL.
JL, sorry, JLCD.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Member Wall, and discussion. So, now, please, Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Okay, so, anyway, IHBG, one, two, three, fourth, I don't want to say paragraph, but the fourth line, prior to removing the child from public schools, should that be prior to unenrolling the child from public school? And if, I'm, it doesn't matter if it would be interpreted the same way? Fine?
I have, I do not believe there is a substantive difference in terms of our implementation, so whatever the committee prefers, this is what was recommended, but...
Leave it, leave it. Thank you. Member Hollins, is that a handout?
Yes, I had a comment on each of the policies. On the homeschooling, remember Ekstrom mentioned, prior to removing the children from public schools, some people homeschool and never start public schools, so, in all cases, people don't remove their children. Wouldn't it say, "Prior to beginning home education"? But, and the other thing I wanted to mention on this is, this says that no homeschooling parent can participate in any public school programs, correct? That's what this new policy is?
Parent or student, or both?
Student. So, that's the new policies, there is no access to any public school program. But we, do we not still have some responsibility to these children in terms of special ed or some other...
We do, they have to do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to, I anticipated you were going to say extracurricular, and you said special ed, which is why I said that.
Well, I'm just trying to understand the new, the old practice was, if you had space, you could let someone in. This one says, "No, we're not doing that." But we still do have some responsibility to these children?
Yes, and that's mandated by special education law. But you're, yes, you're correct.
And my comment on the administering meds, I don't have any issue with even one word, except I think this is an administrative regulation. Maybe it was a policy before, but this level of detail, you know, you're going to do this on Monday and this on Friday and put this here, every, if we pass this as a policy and not a regulation, every single time, one detail changes, it's got to come back to the committee. So, my, if I could just finish, wouldn't, my suggestion would be that we have a simple administering medication policy saying we follow public health, we acknowledge that everything we do in schools under the Department of Public Health, we follow the guidelines, and then this just be the regulation that go with the policy that you can change if something changes? Because this is awfully definitive to be a policy, that's all.
I agree. However, this is all dictated by, you know, nursing regulations and licensing requirements. And my understanding from what Kelly Savitri had shared is that the prior nurse leader had actually moved this forward to some point for approval. And right now, we do not have this in place at all. So, I am happy to explore what you just shared, and maybe the policy should read differently. I would almost ask if the committee could consider approving this so that we can move forward in doing what we need to do in this regard, and then potentially update the policy next meeting to what could be a more brief policy, and let this revert to an administrative regulation. But I would be cautious about moving forward with nothing in place.
I appreciate the perspective, Member Hollins, because when I looked at it, I was like, this doesn't look like the rest of our other policies. Well, and, yeah, we got to just keep cleaning stuff up, so something is better than nothing at this point. And it sounds like we could fairly easily replace wording in, at a future meeting, to make the policy more overarching?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, thank you both. So, we are still discussing the motion, is that correct? Is there further discussion? Okay, so, the motion that we are voting on is to approve the policies as presented, or should we say with, because there was a couple of changes accepted?
I think Dr. Hollins' recommendation for changing the language of, "Prior to removing the child from public school," to "Prior to beginning a homeschool program" is certainly in line with the intent, so...
Okay, so, no biggie?
No, I don't think so.
All okay with that?
From my perspective.
Yeah. And they're living documents, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, a vote on the motion to approve the policies as presented, we're looking at two right now, which is IHBG and JLCD. And I'm going to, after this, start my career at WKRP. I'm dating myself, right? I didn't know turkeys couldn't fly. Sorry. We're ready to vote? I'm not hearing anyone wanting to talk further. So, all those in favor of the motion? Just with an eye or a hand is fine, so that passes unanimously, thank you. And now, we need, we have, hold on, we've got other policies. We've got student conduct, JIC.
No, we don't, that's in here erroneously. That one is, it was referred to the subcommittee for discussion. it was referred to the subcommittee for discussion, because it was one of... I'm not even sure it was this JIC in particular, but it was something related to student conduct that we passed on an expedited basis. The committee asked us to essentially deliberate on it and bring it back, because we... and again, obviously, we're doing more policies on an expedited basis, because we have some gaps and some issues that we need to address, but they just want to reassure the committee that we are going through a, you know, a comprehensive, step-by-step process with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to deliberate on all of our policies and bring them back to you, so that these will all be included in that as we go forward.
Thank you.
So, the only one left is...
BEDH.
BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings.
And we are going to do the first reading tonight, correct?
First reading, yes.
So, we would start with a motion to approve the first reading of BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings. This is so we can have discussion.
So moved.
I can't get...
Mayor Wiedegartner, and I saw Member Karen, and I heard Member Ekstrom, which is kind of the same in my head. They sound the same. They do, on remote. You can't tell who's who. So, discussion. So, what we have here in the packet for tonight has the policy in its entirety. It fills up one page, and there are a couple of changes that are highlighted that are hard to see if you didn't print it in color. Do you want to, Glenn, add anything from, like, starting the conversation? How do you want to do it?
Sure, I can give some context. So, the... the... Paul, during... I guess going back, there was an issue around public... our policy on public comment at school committee meetings, and the committee asked the policy subcommittee to take a look at it, and in the interim, I heard at a MASC conference that, you know, we should all be reviewing our public participation policies because of First Amendment rights and things like that. So, MASC actually had an updated model policy, so, I asked the superintendent to work with MASC to bring that to us, and we discussed it. We made some... a small change, I think, from the recommended policy, but largely putting forward to the MASC model policy with one change, and yes, and it sounds from the public comment tonight like there's... there's support and interest in it from the community.
Thanks, Glenn. So, further discussion on this one?
Yes. Chair.
Mayor Wiedegartner, go ahead.
Just a comment, more than anything. I support this policy as it's written. I do want to remind, unfortunately, the two people who spoke, three people who spoke, are not here, but the item number three, topics for discussion should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. I have no problem with that one. I just want to remind people that a whole lot of things are not within the school committee's authority, and unless you can definitively state them, you've given some broad instruction here. Approval of the budget of the district's public schools, the performance of the superintendent, and the educational goals and policies of the district's public schools, and those are by and large the main categories. So, there's other things that I think the public will be likely to bring to us that just are not within the scope of authority of the school committee, but they don't know that, so I don't want us to say, wait a minute, that's not... I mean, I think we should hear them out, but I think there should be an... always be consciousness around the fact that they need to be... it needs to be explained to them at the time that this is not necessarily something that we have to do.
Further... yeah, Secretary Johnson Musad, and then I saw Member Karen, and Member Wall, if you wanted to talk, you can go after that.
One kind of administrative note, there's a blank for where we're supposed to put in greenfields in number five, so we should do that, but I'll just say that I loved the model of talking about items within the scope of the school committee's scope of authority, and because I think many groups understand that what's on the agenda... what's not on the agenda is sometimes just as important as what is on the agenda, and so, if the community wishes to have us be discussing something, or call our attention to something that is within our scope, and it's not on the agenda, this gives them the opportunity to come and say, I want this on the agenda at a future meeting, for example. So, I really like that, and overall, I think it's a very well-designed, and I think it's going to be an iterative process. We'll, you know, we'll be trying something new and see how it goes, and we can adjust as we learn and grow.
Okay, so, I saw Member Karen, and then I see Member Ekstrom and Member Hollins. Go ahead.
I also support this policy, and I also... I support it on multiple levels, but one of them I thought about really was how much more equitable it will be for the chair to enforce this policy. It was often an issue where people would start speaking about one thing that was clearly on the agenda, and it was very difficult to enforce equitably, and that left a burden on our chair, and chairs in the past, it had happened to chairs before our current chair as well. So, I really felt like that was important to change, because that's not a fair job for the chair to be constantly policing that. I also think that it's really important that we talk to our public more... and by talk, I... people... I think sometimes people think of our public comment as more of a dialogue than it actually is, and so what I really want to focus going forward on is creating a space for them to realize they can speak to us individually, and then we can have a dialogue by email, by on this farmer's market corner, whatever that means. Sometimes I don't want to be bothered with my four children, but I always want to hear what you have to say, and I think that it's very difficult to come and spew information at someone and then have us all just be like, okay. Especially not that we all have masks on and we can't, like, smile back, or like, make weird eye contact. It's weird. So, going forward in this, I still want to start talking about ways for us to communicate, or for you people still here, to communicate with our public a little more straightforwardly. That's all.
Yes, I have a couple of questions and a comment. The first sentence, that all regular and special meetings, school committee are open to the public, my understanding is that all our meetings are business meetings, and it's referenced somewhere else here. There's different types of business meetings, but all the time on the meet, it's a business meeting, and the policy is saying we want to hear from the public, but we can't disrupt our business meetings, so I sometimes... I wouldn't mind if it said, all business meetings of the school committee are open, but I have two questions. One, is there a possibility that someone says something that leads to action? Someone mentioned that today, but it's often crossed my mind. People come in and say, I'm really concerned about this or the other, and we're just listening, we don't discuss, but is there a possibility that after a meeting, we might say, no, we hadn't thought about that, we should really look into it or something, because the policy doesn't say what we do with that information, it's just, we're happy to hear from you? And the other thing that I question is in number five. I assume this means that people that are here with a written comment, but we have people that write to us, and I've never... and we even mentioned... someone mentioned, you know, people can't come because they can't have access, so they write to us instead. Those comments aren't shared with the public, which is what I'm... should they be? Like, two people that couldn't come to a meeting have a comment, and the superintendent responds, but the public doesn't hear what the comment was, and my only other thought is in number three, where it said, the performance of the superintendent, educational goals and policies. Don't people often speak about programs, program concerns, and those are contained in our policies, but would somebody coming in to talk about not a goal or a policy, but a program at some school that they're concerned about, would that be ruled out, or should this say goals, programs, and policies?
I don't think that the school committee's purview is necessarily programs directly.
Not...
I know that's an unpopular view with you, but I don't think that it is.
It isn't our admin... we're not administrative, but our policies direct our programs. We have sec... I'm just wondering if someone will be cut off if they want to talk about a program under this policy.
Well, we don't... we can't dictate how future chairs will respond, but I would go back to Member Karen's comment, that our current policy as it stands is impossible for the chair to enforce fairly.
I understand. At number five, could you clarify the written comment that comes in, then the person isn't here? Is it shared with the public? You know, we got three letters about some...
I mean, generally, our written comments are something that we make sure are shared with all school committee members. That's the... that's the promise. That's the practice.
Okay.
Further comment? Member Hollins, were you good? Okay. Anyone else? Member Wall, I'm sorry, and then Secretary Johnson Musad.
I just wanted to make sure that at the... on the agenda, we list the topics that they can just... that are within our scope.
So, you're saying, like, continue to print the policy in full on each agenda? I think that's an important point.
But also, you know, on number three, make sure that they understand what is in the scope of the school committee.
Mm-hmm.
We don't... we don't tell teachers how to teach math. We just know that math is being taught.
Well, and the policy gives the leeway to allow someone to just speak, whether it's actually about something in our authority or not, which I think Mayor Wiedegartner kind of alluded to earlier. Yeah. Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. I mean, the reality is, people who come for public comment, who are respectful and thoughtful and appropriate in their comments, shouldn't be cut off, period. You know, whether or not we can actually address it as a school committee is a completely different matter, but we don't have to worry about that during public comment. It's just that. Secretary Johnson Musad, sorry.
Yeah, MASC recently had an article, because obviously, around the country, the school committees have become a lightning rod for a lot of controversy and even violence, and so, they gave some recommendations, and it did include, you know, continuing our practice of having it listed in the agenda, the instructions of how public comment works, so that's important. And to Member Hollins's point, I think that one place we might want to look at improving our adherence to our own policies is, I think that there's a model template for a school committee agendas in one of our policies, and it includes new business as a kind of standing agenda item, so then if a public... during public comment, if someone raised something and we wanted to have a discussion about adding it to the business for the next meeting, or whatever, we could do that under that item, so that might be worth looking into.
I support that. Could I ask if you would entertain the first five words saying, all regular and special business meetings of the school committee?
And what does that change?
It adds clarification to... I don't know what it changed. It adds clarification to the meetings not being disrupted.
Meetings that aren't business meetings?
So, what this does say, though...
I agree with that.
All right. So, what this does say, however, and no one has talked about this, is number one, is that public comment segment shall not exceed 15 minutes. So, they're... they're... so, like, five people are able to make public comment. I'm saying that out loud, just so that it...
And it does exist at the discretion of the chair, too.
Absolutely.
In practice, we tend not to give public comment opportunity during special meetings.
Yep.
Only during regular business meetings, but it doesn't... I mean, we can still have it in there, because we also have allowed it during special meetings, and it is, if you... if you look at the open meeting law, all of it is at the discretion of the chair and intended to allow the public to participate when it's not disruptive to the business of the school committee.
Yep.
Just to clarify, that was why we added that underlying sentence that gives the chair the ability to extend it another 15 minutes, and the other piece is, you may get times when you can accommodate more than five people if their comments are less than three minutes each, so, I think... I think the 30 minutes is probably sufficient.
Let's hope. Sometimes it's not, though.
Was it? It wasn't for a while.
Further discussion? This was helpful. This was really good work. Thank you. So, let's... we're ready to vote. The motion is... yeah, I don't know what the motion is.
To approve the first reading of the BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings policy, and to approve it.
Okay. And we're ready to vote. All those in favor? An eye or a show of hands? That looks unanimous to me. Excellent. Thank you all. That was good... good work. Are we done?
So, this goes on the next meeting?
So, that was... yeah, so that passes as a first reading. We will have a second reading opportunity on the meeting... the regularly scheduled agenda for November.
And it should probably be on the agenda for the subcommittee as well, just to have a brief discussion before we bring it back, in case there's any changes people want to make.
Thank you, Secretary Johnson Musad. Excellent point. So, we had intended to have our next agenda item be an executive session, and the only business item in that executive session is related to item eight on the agenda, which you see is vote on the cafeteria workers settlement agreement. It is normal for the agreement details and contract details getting worked out to take a few weeks longer than we ever want it to. That's lawyers for you. No, it's good work. It's important work. You don't want to pass something and then say, oops, we forgot this. We had an excellent round of negotiations with the cafeteria workers and their legal counsel and their... and their union, and we are so, so grateful, as we told them in those negotiations, for all of their good work, and we will likely be able to ratify that... approve that contract after they ratify at the November meeting. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
From the mayor, and a second?
Second.
And all those in favor? Raise your hands. We are adjourned at whatever time it is, 8:28. Thank you all.
Thank you.